Yes, because.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our work session tonight. Before we get started.
Yeah, we do have one, one item I'd like to add to the, for the discussion tonight and then ask you to add for the agenda for the board meeting, and that will be the naming of the new elementary school. We've got all the information in and Ms. Hodges is here, so that should be a good thing and exciting thing. So with, we'll put that down under new business if y'all are okay with that under number 12.
Perfect. Alrighty, so Ms. Bramlett, you're gonna have the invocation place. We'll approve some minutes on the agenda. Mr. Bailey, you'll have our committee report ready for next week?
Oh, it's already been done. I wasn't able to go.
Okay.
My teammate stepped up and got it done.
Perfect.
So we'll be prepared to make.
Perfect. Alrighty, we'll have some recognitions. Some visitors. Let's hop into superintendent department reports. Dr. Gray.
Dr. Green is not with us, and I can just ask me to pass on that the communication board down 120th day count is posted for your review.
Perfect. Still not at fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand just yet.
Quite invisibly next year.
Next year. Awesome. Already, Ms. Houston.
Yes, sir. So every work session I'll bring to you, the invoices paid between ten and twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And we had two this year or this month. One is for Bulldog Kia for for twenty-two thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars for a twenty-twenty-one Kia S套letto's, and that's going to be a maintenance vehicle and that will be used district-wide. The next one is B and H photo video paid out of the general fund for eleven thousand seventeen dollars, and it's for I T S tech laptops, about eight of them, and that is district-wide. Any questions on that? All right, um, the next step is I'm going to go over the budget process for you guys. So the first part of it, we like to be as transparent as possible. So we do a lot of education, educate, educating of the budget process. So around March or April, the district budget timeline will be presented to the SGTs, and they'll kind of see the same timeline in their meetings. Then we are going to develop a budget video. It will be hosted by Dr. McMichael and yours truly. It's a riveting video that you really need to watch. But we'll try to get that done here in March, and we send that out to all users so they can understand the budget process how we did in twenty-twenty-three and what we're looking forward to in twenty-twenty-four. We will present those videos at the faculty and SGT meetings in March or April. And then in April twenty-twenty-three or April this year, the SGTs will start looking at their school-based budget and make some decisions on that. So we are developing the budget of twenty-twenty-four right now, and we opened up the budget work file on January third. The governor presented recommendations on the state budget, and so we're trying to implement those and trying to follow what the state is doing and what the decisions are being made. The preference sheets were due back from the employees on January twentieth. They had a career fair on February fourth. The deadline for general fund budget request was February seventeenth, so we cut off all requests after that. The allotments are be give, going to be given to the school, I think, this week or next week. And then after that's done, I can do the salary and benefits projection. The deadline for all other funds, this is our capital projects funds, our federal funds and our school food nutrition funds, the deadline for all those requests is March third. That stays open a little bit further. And then we'll talk to cabinet about some early preliminary decisions on the salary. The employees will sign contracts will be due back on March tenth. We'll have another career fair on March twenty-fifth. And then hopefully we'll get some preliminary Q V E projections back from the state around April eighteenth of this year. And then the Barrow County Tax Assessor's Office will come and give us a report on his projections on April twenty-fifth. Then I bring the budget to you guys. And so we'll, of course, go over the budget update again. I'll do the same thing around March twenty-eighth. We'll review a draft budget by executive cabinet on April eleventh, and then by April twentieth, we'll have our planning session here at the V O E at six P M. Or we'll go over the budget in detail. Guy Rogers will come on the twenty-fifth to give his projections, as I said above, and then I will present to you the general fund budget tentative, tentative budget for twenty-twenty-four in April. You'll look at it and hopefully pass it on May second, and then we'll receive, hopefully receive the digest from the Barrow County Tax Commissioner around May twenty-second. Then we'll have the work session for the mileage rate presentation, and also we'll be presenting all other funds budget on that day. Then comes June, and this is our busy time. So we will have, hopefully you'll approve the budget for all other funds and the mileage rate on June sixth. We'll advertise the mileage rate in the public hearing. We'll have a budget public hearing on June thirteenth. The mileage rate public hearing, two of those on June fifteenth. We have to have three of those, two budget hearings. So the next budget hearing will be June twentieth. The last mileage rate public hearing will be on the twenty-second, and then we'll probably have to have a called meeting to approve the mileage rate and the if we get the military a week before and we can get that approved, then all this can move up and we can try to be done on your last day of work, which is, I think it's the twenty-second of June, and you won't have to go into the twenty-seventh. So just always refer to our website or ask me about the public hearings because those are going to move dependent on when I get that information from the county. I had two other things real quick that I wanted to go over, some follow-up questions or follow-up on some items. And one was, Ms. Bramlett, you asked me about what our increase, what our inflation looked like, and so I've gotten feedback from school food nutrition. And in school food nutrition, of course, they buy a lot of different items, and they're seeing inflation anywhere from sixteen percent all the way up to ninety-two percent. Yogurts eighty percent up, ketchup forty-three percent up. Chick, chicken fillets are nineteen percent up, pizza thirty percent up. It's so we have a lot of inflation there to pay for with our increase in our tax digest and everything else. Maintenance, he, Greg said he's seen about a fifteen percent increase across the board with parts, his energy twenty-five percent increase in waste removal. So our, our splosta increased seven point five percent less from the previous year to this year. So you know, that doesn't really cover all the increases that we're seeing. And the last thing I wanted to follow up on is what are our next steps for the age-based property tax exemption? Carl Vincent came in and gave us that presentation, and now we're going to have some citizens that will come and talk to us and, and let us know how they feel about it. But what can I give you? What are you expecting from me? What, what do you need from us to move forward? Do you want to move forward with anything? I can give you what the next net tax digest is for the counties with the exemptions. You can kind of see that and how it compares to ours to see if we can take any sort of future losses for letting our seniors have more of a, more of a exemption there. I've been asked to see what our budget will look like in five or 10 years, try to make a prediction of what that's going to look like. I can, I can give my best shot at that. But is there anything else that y'all want me to, me and Dr. McMichael, the executive cabinet to bring you?
Jennifer, what I'm looking for is increasing the amount that houses can be appraised for over the, what was it, two-hundred thousand dollar? A starter house in Barrow County right now is between three fifty and four hundred thousand. Okay, so I'm saying that if we're going to look at this and be serious about it, the pricing of housing, that, that figure that two-hundred thousand needs to go to at least six hundred thousand. Because years ago, when we had that two-hundred thousand starter house for sixty-five thousand dollars. So we need to look at least six hundred thousand dollars, but how much, and, and also is there anything, the income, yeah, the income obviously needs to be increased too. I would say somewhere around a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty-five thousand. Y'all feel free to jump in anytime you guys have ideas here.
Well, I'll, you know, me, I'll give you all sorts of ranges, and then y'all can make some decisions.
I think one thing I'd like to, like us to look at with that is, is instead of putting a, maybe instead of putting a set number in the legislation like two, two hundred thousand down the road, we'll have to change again. If we could figure out a way to put it on a scale.
Right.
Or a percentage that takes care of itself and moves.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because it's gonna, the, the gauge is going to constantly change.
Right, because we don't want to have to come back.
Right, exactly, because next year. Right, and that's what I was thinking too. Being in real estate, the gauge constantly changes with the market, and you know, as interest rates go up, the, the cost of housing goes down and vice versa. So right now, we're in this really weird market, and Jordan and I could tell you, you know, we don't really know what's going to happen from day to day, especially right now with the feds like doing this crazy stuff. So if we could come up with a way.
You could do, you know, just say, what percentage of two-hundred thousand were we at, and if we could extrapolate and figure that percentage out and just do the legislation where is it that, that percentage or maybe a little more. So if things go up, six hundred thousand is the thing, it goes up with it, if it comes back down.
Right.
I don't know about the coming back down part. And the reason I say that is because there needs to be a base. We can always look at taking it back down if, if the economy just explodes, you know, it just implodes rather, I should say. But there needs to be a base that we work from with an escalating number if, if inflation continues to rise.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Or you could do that so that, you know, every year from that base, if inflation rises, then we make it a larger exemption. If it, if it doesn't, we just stay where it is so that we don't have to come back and forth all the time with this. And as far as income, real estate agents in the room might want to tell me where all these people are getting the money to pay for these houses, what they're doing exactly. So I just think this is, it's important, and obviously I would like for anybody over sixty-five who doesn't feel compelled to pay school taxes, even though I can make an argument as to why they should, because I really want somebody being able to read those prescriptions, but I get to the nursing home, but make sure this doesn't just correct, but you know, if we're going to do it, let's look and see if we can do it for everybody, or if there needs to be a cutoff and how much it's going to cost. So you know, that's going to take you a lot of time, I'm sure, to do, but you can always work your magic.
Sit and talk as a board.
Pretty cool. We could, we could set up another meeting.
At some point, because we haven't, as a board, we haven't sat down and hashed it out and really talked about it. We've been, it's been presented to us, but we haven't had a time for the nine of us to sit and actually talk.
Yeah, we need, we need time.
So we might set up a meeting where we can do that, kind of hash it all out. When the principals don't have car rider duty early in the morning to start off.
So probably just a meeting on that.
Yeah, we'll have a, a meeting on the senior tax exemption, and then maybe we'll get that scheduled. Come up with some questions that we can present to Jennifer, and then if we need the Carl Fitz Institute to go back and rerun our numbers to show us the, the outcome. Does that work with you?
Beautiful.
I, I just think we all need to be talking.
We don't know enough yet. We don't have enough information here. We've got what they gave us, but we need to see numbers and how much it's going to cost. Ultimately, our responsibility as a board is to ensure that we have the money to provide the quality education that our parents and the students expect, and I frankly don't want to have to get back to where we're reusing erasers all the time because we don't have the money to do what we need to do for basis. Been there, done that, didn't like it.
And I have not spoken with Jordan, but I know Pat Grant called me at the town polling that Alex had last Thursday about that, right, she and said she mentioned something about her thoughts on that also for elderly people. One of her concerns was that people didn't want to come every year and prove what their income was.
They don't have to do that anymore.
Probably my first year.
Or eight years.
In this seat, we under doubt.
Okay, that was one of our big songs.
To answer your question, I think a lot of what we're seeing is people come from other areas and other states and sold houses that are, don't think we have a lot from California, but one example I've had is I came from California and take the money, the equity they made, and they just buy the houses cash. That's, that's what's bringing, it's pricing everybody that works and lives here. There are other places in Georgia out of their communities, and that's an old story, and nothing new about it in Georgia.
I have a lot of clients moving here from out of state.
And they're used to paying.
They've paid a lot more.
New York, particularly.
Come down and pay cash with what they've sold their house for. Drives the prices up.
I, I think we just have, we got a lot more information we need to wrap our heads around before we can sit down and.
And it's a tough balance, is you don't, you know, you want to be careful not to bind a, a future board to anything that they can't deal with and sustain either. So it's a lot of, lot of, lot of pieces to the puzzle, for sure.
I, I want to take a chance, a minute to thank, I remember, and we got a compliment according to Clay today. He went to start giving some meat out in Jackson County at a farm, and he said the board, Barrow County Board was complimented by the guy that has bums up on and he said their county commission, he's been talking about how well our school board has been working with county commission and, and planning our schools and doing things. And in fact, he told their school board over there, he said, y'all hear that Jackson County has a better school system than y'all? Don't believe it. He said, but Barrow County, y'all need to take a lesson from them. They're doing it right, planning their growth and doing things. So you need to talk to their superintendent boards.
Appreciate that. We've got. Great team, but doing it all on all ends. So it's always good to hear some accolades. Thank you.
Good news travels.
Alright, I guess that's it. Alright, moving on, Mr. Purna.
That's.
Good evening. Just a quick update on our construction projects, our new elementary school. Couple of notes to make there on, on the elementary. We've got the flooring that has begun in there, the vinyl tile. I don't think we have a picture of porcelain tile that, that just started in the last day or two, but also ceiling grid. So with those building finishes and those pieces going in, it really, really begins to take shape inside. And for Bassett, and we're on schedule to complete the elementary school in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Okay, for Bassett two, we've got foundations well underway. And again, just over the last week, we've got not only foundations excavated, but concrete going in those foundations now. The, the critical piece is the, the building wall, and that was ninety feet of that anyway, was poured yesterday. The most critical piece of that was poured yesterday. So these are really important pieces, getting ourselves out of the ground here, and so we're, we're well underway at Bassett two now. That's it.
Weather, the weather just broke perfectly for that too.
It did, yeah. It's, it's been great. We'll take every bit of that we can get.
Joe, when Vince and I were at Bassett doing a clean schools, we noticed that the hallways, you know, they're, they're sheet rock over there, and they look kind of rough.
Yeah.
Already, and we were concerned about that, that that's going to be very expensive to have to paint all that every year. What do you think about that in terms of?
It's not our favorite. You know, we'd certainly rather have a block wall in a corridor or high-traffic area like that. I could tell you for Bassett was budget-driven entirely to try to get, you know, maximum value there, number of classrooms. And so moving forward, you know, unless we absolutely have to, we'll stay away from that. Now, we may have a wall or two inside of a classroom.
Right.
You know, particularly a common wall, in case we have to cut in a window or a door. Sometimes we get, you know, requests like that to have rooms communicate. But aside from that, you know, we'll, admin areas would get it to media centers like that, but corridors, stairwells, bathrooms will go with the block.
Yeah.
Much more durable.
So the hall, maybe we might want to look into changing the color, because I think that gray in the hallway right now is looking, it's looking a little tattered.
Yeah. And, and it will, you know, this, this time of year, it'll start to show a little wear, and maybe at some point we come back and look at some other type of finish even that we could put so many feet up the wall.
Yeah, that's, Vince actually recommended that, that kind of finish, yeah.
We're just not at a point really where we can do that funding or, or labor-wise, but at some point, maybe we can, and that, that would help us.
Yeah, I think the upkeep of painting it eventually is going to cost as much as doing something to keep from having to keep painting it over and over again, because that's not cheap either.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a good place to throw in my first plug, East Bloss voting. Started, and we need everybody to get out. There you go. I've been at a polling place.
Excellent.
There was one person at the polling place, and it was me. So we need to get folks out for the East Bloss vote for sure.
That's right. Tuesday, correct?
Yeah, it's already, already, is it already, it's already, is it already started? Yeah, it's already, there was crossover.
Started, yeah.
Yeah, so early voting started.
Right, official date is Tuesday.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first of March.
Twenty-first of March, yes.
Don't, don't waste time. Go ahead and go out and get it done early.
Another election Tuesday.
The first of many.
Can't keep up.
Many advertising spots.
Thanks, sir.
We'll have tonight.
Thanks, Jared.
Alrighty, Dr. McMichael, you're going to be Dr. Martin tonight.
I am, yes, son. So I first, we've got an update on things that are going on with the Rutland Academy and GNETs, and I'd like to ask our resident expert, and same way widely, to come up and fill us all in on what we're, what we're dealing with and what we're having to deal with there.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all of you giving me an opportunity to talk to you tonight about a very hot topic that has been circulating around our educational region lately. Well, not necessarily lately. This has actually been a thing for about seven years, but everything's boiling up, and, and we're at a place where we've got to make some decisions and take action. So this is all about Georgia Network for Educational Therapeutic Support, so what we call GNETs. So in twenty-sixteen, the U.S. Department of Justice filed a lawsuit against the state of Georgia alleging that its treatment of students with disabilities in the GNETs facilities that, that we were segregating them from their typical peers, and that this is a violation of the American with disability, Americans with Disabilities Act. So it alleges that these students who present with significant social, emotional, and behavioral challenges, and thus requiring the GNET services, that they are being segregated and they're subject to subpar educational opportunities, just basic opportunities in the school day to have other enriching activities happening for them, and then also that the, the facilities that they're subject to are subpar as well. And so the assertion is that many students in separate schools don't have access to a variety of resources that students in typical schools would have, that they don't get to join clubs that other students get to be in, they don't go to dances, the field trips, the ability to participate in sports. So all these very enriching activities that we want all of our students to be a part of. Students who are at this separate school called Rutland Academy in Athens, they are not allowed, and they're not able to participate in those same enriching activities. So it's important to note that Rutland Academy is the last separate school in the state of Georgia that is providing these separate school services. And it is one of the most restrictive, one of the most restrictive settings that's available in our continuum of special education supports. And what's happening now in all the other regions that have GNETs is you've got districts that are collaborating to provide these services within an inclusive setting. So these different GNETs around the state are happening in schools, and districts are coming together to pool their resources essentially to serve those students and give them what they need within an actual typical school. And so that's kind of where our plan comes in. But so just in the past month or month or so, it has been decided that Rutland Academy is no longer going to be in existence in Athens, Georgia, and that the thirteen district, our thirteen district reset has to come up with a creative way to serve these students. And so what we have decided to do here in Barrow County is that we're going to partner with Jefferson City Schools. So it'll just be these two districts. We're going to partner together to serve these students, and we will house them or house the program, and these students will receive their services in one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school. So that will be County Line, Russell, and Winder Barrow, Winder Barrow High School. There's going to be a teacher and a parapro for each of those classes, and the plan is for all of them to be trained as a registered behavior technician. And one other part of this that I really like is there's going to be something called therapeutic shared supports. And you guys are probably familiar with the related services shared supports that we provide to students. So that's occupational therapy. That's vision services, audio, otiology, different services like that. So this will be therapeutic shared support services. So districts will pool their money, and this will go towards, we're still working on this piece. So what the package is going to look like essentially. There's discussion of board-certified behavior analysts, some sort of counselor or therapist that can push into those classrooms and provide therapy, small group therapy, maybe some individual. Those are all things that we still have to work out. They're also talking about a social worker, perhaps for just that program, maybe a coordinator. So all these things are being tossed around. Oh, yeah, and I wanted to mention maybe music therapy and art therapy. So the districts are talking about this. We're talking with Jefferson City and just deciding what is going to meet our students' needs best. And we'll, we'll come up with that plan and roll it out, and it will be scheduled to roll out in August. So that.
There'll also be recess, Reese will still be doing some supporting also. They'll have a, a district, part-time at least, a district supervisor for the areas, add some, give some help to the administration and some other supports too. So we're not, it's not whole support with Risa and what goes into GNETs is going away, but it's, it's just morphing and changing.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. They, there will still be a director who monitors the overall GNETs process and the referrals that are coming in. So those different eligibility requirements, they are not going to go by the wayside. It will still be a very vital component of the process to ensure that the right students are the ones who are actually going into this program.
He's very conscious about not putting that on our administrators and, and. So.
Yes. Okay, so is this going to be a budget item we're going to have to deal with?
It.
Or the state? Is any, do you think anybody who's decided Rutland doesn't need to exist has ever been there?
So I know that they have had some scheduled visits where people have come in and done walkthroughs, now what that looks like. I, you know, I can't honestly say, but I do know that there were some folks from the federal government that did come and do some walkthroughs. But have they lived the educational lives that we've lived?
And honestly, I think that's one of the reasons Rutland's kind of the last one, because I have been in other, other areas and been in some of the facilities and some of the other areas, and they really were substandard. Rutland was extremely nice.
Yes, and I do think that that's why it was the last one standing.
Well, that brings up another point, because we did finance that building along with.
That's a, that's a piece that's in play down the road with, with their athletes. That's one of the options.
I want the taxpayers money back.
That's one.
Everybody is definitely talking about that, you know.
Talked about it this morning at a meeting, as a matter of fact, so.
So the next question is, how are we going? Let me phrase this properly.
You'll be careful.
How many people here have been to Rutland and observed classes there?
I've driven by Rutland, and I think it's a really nice place. So I was a little confused.
The old Rutland was.
Well, my experience with Rutland was I had a parent whose child was going to be sent, sent there and was not happy about it. And was not happy about it, and since I had not seen the facility. Uh, the super former superintendent and uh, that was three superintendents ago, and I went on a visit. Now, y'all who know me not, I don't usually just go down normal paths, I kind of, you know, take detour sometimes. So as I'm visiting, what I saw there, down going down one of the corridors, which nobody seemed to want me to go down. Were two guys who looked like they had just gotten out of Marines. Trying to subdue and walk down a hallway to literally a padded cell, padded room. Okay, and put him in it. I saw other students there who, for every student, there'd be two people in the room to deal with them. Now, I don't know, maybe things have changed since then, but I've got a concern about safety for our other students. And it's a serious concern based on what I've seen at Rutland.
And things have changed, um, they they no longer have the cells or anything like that, um. And I agree on the safety, it's definitely at the foremost importance of of our minds. We're all talking about that and thinking about that, um, but you bring up a good point, the way Rutland looked. The way the services were happening, this is very much the crux of the argument that behind this um lawsuit. It's saying that the way educational services are being provided and carried out in a variety of GNET settings. Are not the way that we would want to provide services to students, so there's some argument like what came first? The chicken or the egg, you know, did it get that way at Rutland Academy? Because it was this separate school where students were very much isolated and segregated and didn't have access to um. The same things that other students had, or you know, was the student in such a crisis mode? And a very volatile time in their life where they needed to be in a setting that was much more. Restrictive, I guess you could say, um, but we have to make sure that we have the right people on staff and the right people trained. And and ready to go to work with those stand, those students. And a lot of times we get students that transfer in from other districts. And um, you know, you might see something like GNET services and you kind of paint a picture in your mind of what that means. But a lot of times there are other districts that just don't have the same continuum of services that we have here in Barrow. And so you might have a student who was gonna, um, you know, they're slated for a GNET service. But when they come and we have them in class and we collect the data, we see, okay, they really don't need anything quite that restrictive. We can, we can bring them out and provide them more at this point in time. So a- and then for those very few students who are very volatile, I can promise you right now from me to you that I will have my thumb on that. Progress monitoring and we're going to make sure that we have students in in the placement that they need to be, because there's still other options that we have. Aside from that, to keep everybody safe.
And I think the perception too, um, like my perception rather of it is. Back years ago, there was a lot more of the, I mean, we're still not, as a state, the best in mental health, but we've come up pretty good ways. And a lot of that's what you, those kind of things, I've seen that too, kind of thing, it's, it was a maybe misplacements for mental health issues. And not for special education issues, those type of things, and and the other piece too, and Amy just pointed it out is, Barrow is actually. For our size, especially what I would call a light user of GNETs, and uh we have a very strong continuum of services. It takes a lot, and some of y'all know it because you've gone through it, and I have too as a principal to, for for us to actually have a student to go over to GNETs. Always, it has been that way for years, it's one reason we partnered with Jefferson, they have the same philosophy on that, so. Um, when you have thirteen districts coming into one school, you're going to get a whole different, you know, some will have a very strict gate. And some, just to put it bluntly, almost no gate of the kids that were going there.
Okay, so the federal lawsuit was filed against the state of Georgia?
State, yes ma'am.
Okay, and so we're having to now.
Comply.
Deal with this, right, man, I want the money.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get to your question. So we will have um ten students total between both districts. And right now Jefferson City is sending um. Two or three. And they're splitting this fifty fifty with us.
That's um, we we're doing the hosting and but there's, they have a much less number and so it works out there and they're. They're pulling their share with it too. Um, staff, we've decided we'll do the hiring on that, likes to hurt them and then if they have someone. Uh, we'll definitely take a look, but being that it's in our facility, we won't.
Yeah, they're looking and recruiting as well, but at the end of the day, the postings are on our site. And our principals are doing the interviewing and hiring.
Sat with superintendent this morning, she's got a few she may be sending down our way, so at least interview, so.
How much money did we spend uh to support Risa as a system last year?
I can get you that information.
Would you please? My, my whole thing about this. Is a safety issue. And the fact that once again, Barrow County taxpayers are having to. Put the bill for something that, because we don't have enough mental health facilities in the state. And enough support for folks with mental illnesses. And the last thing I want to see is any school system in the state of Georgia who's having to. Deal with this, have a safety problem because of it.
Yes, ma'am, I agree, and this is where the therapeutic shared support services. What Risa is really pushing and saying, this is how it's going to be different, that this will be the difference maker. Is having the the mental health portion of this where where we can have people pushing in and working with the students. And that's a component that, you know, we don't currently have in our self-contained behavior classes. Because we're just focusing there with, you know, antecedent behavior consequence and how do we help children learn um their replacement behaviors? GNETs goes deeper than that, because you've got to have the therapeutic component to it. So we're, um, Dr. McMichael's been wonderful in talking with me about this and really um helping us think through. What it is that we need to to get in place so that we can support um our students, our admin teams. And just do what's right for everyone.
I I, it's not something that I've been happy about since it started, but but I think all things considered, the way we've got it set up. And the way we're going to do it, it's going to be, really, I won't say that it's an awesome thing, but it's going to be really well run and really well done. And actually should give us some more mental health capabilities at those three schools too, because we do have some self-contained classes already there. That could benefit from some of the training, you know, type of stuff, we'd be able to do, but it's, it's making the best out of it.
Doubt that our teams can can deal with this successfully. I'm still worried about safety issues, so. And and how much more this is going to cost us, uh, when we don't share expenses with thirteen different systems.
At the end of the day, we don't have a choice, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so but how do you?
And I I've held against it for years.
Yeah, so we don't have a choice.
And her predecessor to probably tell you that.
And they sound like they're giving us this a tremendous amount of support. Okay, so overall, you're the, you're the fearless leader of this, this, this bunch. So you feel like the support is going to be there?
I think so, yes, I I feel, I feel as good, I mean, like I said, I'm I'm not ever going to be a hundred percent, because I really think that if we're going to. You know, the federal government comes in and makes these kind of demands out of page with new facilities and some other things, but that's never going to happen, so. Uh, dealing with the hand we've dealt, I think we're in good shape, yeah.
How much of this was funded before, was it funded in the GNET, by the federal or the state, and now it's coming down to the local? Is that what it is?
The money that's going into GNETs now has come out to the.
Cause my question for asking that was back in December, when I was in the financial. Like that part of this, uh, training, this was brought up, but the reason, it's not the reason you were given as why the. Reason I was told, or we were told as board members that were in there, is because they didn't want to. Trouble, whoever was controlling it, whether it was Georgia, state of Georgia or who, because it was a lawsuit because of a kid ten years ago that committed suicide. And that's why they were trying, they didn't want the liability, because of one child over ten years. And that's my concern, we're only doing it for one child, we've got how many kids go through in the whole state of New York, you know, GNET? Why is that being put through, if that's the real reason? That we're doing.
Every reason I know.
This, so sugarcoat it, you say this is the reason, when this is really the reason.
Well, the lawsuit is definitely filed and out there and it definitely lays out segregation allegations. Now, whether that might have been an additional.
The lawsuit, um, uh, that was the key issue, I remember when that happened, and um. I think that's what prompted it and then it is, happens with a lot of those types of things and OCR and all sorts of things. Once they started looking into it on that, then that was, a lot of times when you open that door, they never leave. And that's pretty much what happened here was that this, they started looking at, that actually happened in Alpine over the game. So that, then they started checking every, every, every one of us in the state, every, every GNET facility in the state after that. That just blossomed into a much more widespread lawsuit, basically forcing us to do this now.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, um, yeah, uh, we have a familiar face with us um tonight, Dr. Dale Simpson, who you all may remember. He's now with Foothills, uh, been a lot of activity going on around Foothills, I I think sent you all several emails, tried to keep you abreast of what. Is going on there, but um Dale's been right in the thick of it and um, so have I for the past couple of weeks. But um, asked him to come in and give you all an update on what's changing, um, and and sort of why. And and um, what that means for Barrow County in particular.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity, Dr. McMichael and board, uh, it's great to see everybody. And um, I've got just a few points that I wanted to to communicate with y'all. First off, I know that we always have some folks who are are not quite familiar with the work that Foothills does in the community. And so I just wanted to give you a high level overview of that work, um, and describe some impacts uh pending. And we have in any other school district, this is the only school district in which we have two sites located um in the same, in the same system. And so our students meet at night from four PM until nine PM, Monday through Thursday at the Sims Academy Building. We have three hundred and thirty-seven students there, and the Russell Middle School Building, we have a hundred and ninety-eight students there. Now, importantly, when you talk about students, generally speaking, you're talking about enrolled students. This includes students who are attending Foothills part-time, because they're behind on the credit, you know, or they want, some want to get ahead. And so they go to Foothills uh for our transfer credit program. It also includes students who we receive no funding for, uh, we call them Foothills plus students. Those are students who have aged out and they're no longer generating any state funds and foothills at our expense. We are supporting them, they're within five credits of graduation to go ahead and earn that high school diploma. It's also important to note that Barrow County School System is having an impact on not just students who live in Barrow County. But those from our surrounding counties as well, um, in fact, we've got, uh, between the Barrow side and Walton. We've got over eighty students just driving in from Gwinnett, and we have a large number attending at the SIM site who are coming from Okoni. And that's to no expense to your school system, but they are attending foothills in those facilities, so really, uh, we're making an impact. Barrow County School System is making a regional impact for that foothills um opportunity. In addition to the two sites located in Barrow County, we have nineteen additional sites located throughout the state. We're highly concentrated in northeast Georgia Risa, but we go down as far as Macon and Bibb County, Butts County, Jasper County. Baldwin County, we're also located in three state prisons. And so those students are able to attend foothills, whether we're with their foothills plus, they're overage or not. If the Department of Corrections, Corrections approves their participation, they're able to attend. Our teachers go in through the fourteen doors to the classrooms and they're able to earn their high school diploma. And in fact, the most recent data that we have from our great partners at the Department of Corrections is the overall recidivism rate is around thirty percent. You know, when you leave prison and you go back, it's about thirty percent within two or three years, the foothills ratio at this point is one percent. If you give them an opportunity to earn a high school diploma, gain employment, they don't go back. And so that's of course meaningful work and we're really proud of that work. We also serve uh students at the two youth challenge program locations in our state, and you're probably familiar with that program. But if not, I can go through that with you individually, that's a great opportunity for those students as well to earn an accredited high school diploma. Overall, um, from our, from our state so far, since twenty fifteen, we've graduated two thousand students statewide. And four hundred of those have been at the two sites located here in Barrow County. And that is smaller than a a traditional high school, I mean, you've got class sizes, I think of upwards of five hundred, I would, I would think. And so, um, it does seem like a small number, but you have to consider that these are four hundred students. Who likely otherwise would not have a high school diploma. And that leads to all sorts of roads that that no parent and no community member wants those students to go down. In fact, uh, we partnered with the Walton County Chamber of Commerce recently, and they estimated the economic impact of every high school graduate. Over their lifetime in terms of increased earnings and less a need for community sport, support to be half a million dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars over their lifetime, and so with those four hundred students who graduated right here since twenty fifteen. You're talking over two hundred million dollars in in terms of an economic impact, which of course is substantial. Moreover, uh, those, that graduate number does not include the students who attend foothills and are able to keep hope. Through their graduation path, because they're able to make up those credits that otherwise may not fit in their schedule. Uh, many times we have students who, you know, we have a conversation with or their homeschool has a conversation with. And they can get back on track if they get on that mastery-based track and aren't bound to the high school schedule. And they go back, they transfer back to Wander Barrow or Appalachia or Basa in order to graduate, and of course, those students. Are not counted in that number either, together with our partners to the north of us, Mountain Education Charter High School and to the south of us, Coastal Plains. Um, over seven thousand students in the state of Georgia have graduated with their high school diploma who otherwise may not have. And that's making a real difference for our state, particularly since we're experiencing a great deal of economic growth all over the place, they need a qualified workforce. So the next point is what we do, and I first want to point out, because we, we are never a competition to the high schools in our partner districts. Your, your high school principals and staff do an excellent job, if the issue is not their performance. The issue is that every student cannot be successful in a typical high school environment. Some students need to attend at night, some students need to hit the pause button for a few weeks, some students need to get out of the social scene. For a variety of reasons, a non-traditional environment is helpful and needed for many students. Uh, we have students who come to us, many think, you know, foothills as a behavioral program or an alternative school. And that's simply not the case, we have students with us who are pregnant, we have students with us who need to work. You know, every other day or every day to support their family, we have students who just need additional one-on-one support. In order to be successful, uh, the way that we support these students is through, uh, uh, well, actually, it's it's uh multifaceted. So first off, it's a small class size, so our teacher-to-student ratio is twelve to one. And many times it's lower than that, so you might have five teachers in a classroom with students. Uh, five students in the classroom with one teacher, flip that. Uh, we accomplished that through a mastery-based learning environment, so we developed our course curriculum and content from scratch, it's digital. And it's directly aligned to the Georgia standards of excellence, it doesn't have anything extra in there beyond those standards. And when they are working, they hit a roadblock, there is a certified teacher or more than one certified teacher there to help them through. Anytime they take a quiz, they have to score an eighty percent or higher in order to proceed. And so they get one-on-one support from a teacher to go through the questions that they missed, so we're able to correct those misconceptions. Every student, this is, this is a big deal, every student. Every student, this is, this is a big deal. Every student at foothills gets a mentor. A paid mentor. So, and a paid well mentor at that. It's one mentor, uh, for every ten students. And so their job is to make sure that every student on their caseload. Is contacted, uh, weekly. Their parents are contacted. They're setting goals for how much progress they need to make that week. So we're just keeping them moving, keeping them moving toward that finish line toward graduation. We also have aggressive student services, including counselors, graduation coaches. This is a big deal. It's the alumni transition team. Every foothills graduate, one year after graduation, our alumni transition team is making sure that they have the resources that they need to apply for. And gain admission to college, job applications, interview skills, overall encouragement. So that's one of the best parts, uh, of the work that we do is that alumni transition piece. And what we found is a lot of our students, they're scared to graduate. They're nervous about that because they don't know what they're gonna do. And so to be able to extend that continued hand to them really, really makes a difference. And so you may be asking yourselves, how in the world is this possible? You know, how can you provide all of those services? And the reason that we can provide those services is because of our partnership with school districts such as Barrow County. We don't have our own facilities. So we're not, you know, making decisions about blocks and cheap rock or buildings or, or anything like that. We use your internet. Part-time employees. In fact, many times those employees are shared. So many of your teachers and, and some administrators even, uh, work with us part-time. Uh, overall, we've got, I think, thirty-eight full-time employees. So we're only paying T R S on thirty-eight people and benefits on thirty-eight people. Which obviously is not the case in a traditional system. And so we're able to use that efficiency. To invest more in providing additional services to these students, um. Who need it. And speaking of the employees, uh, they're top notch. You know, this is the best of the best, working from your school system. Or retired from your school system, working with these kids. And so moving into the, the current situation that we're in, House Bill eighty-seven. Recently passed unanimously, uh, in the State House. And it's a response to legislation from twenty twenty-one. Uh, that one is labeled Senate Bill one fifty-three. So, and it's designed to correct some issues with the original Senate bill. But there are a few implications that will affect, uh, foothills and our partnership with you. Um, one is, and this is a positive, is that it provides for growth of this model throughout the state. If you compare third grade literacy scores, if you just overlay that on a map. With poverty, you will see that there's a great correlation. And particularly in Southwest Georgia, moving into Central Georgia. And they don't have an opportunity like this and they need it. So this legislation allows for seven zones in the state based on reses. Ours would be Northeast Georgia Risa, Middle Georgia Risa and Griffin Risa. And so more students in the state will have access to this type of learning environment, which is definitely a win. Uh, it will change our enrollment. So currently any student, you know, they're in high school, they can decide to attend foothills. Based on their life situation. This House Bill in its current form, uh, limits enrollment to students who are eighteen and older. Which would, uh, eliminate about fifty-five percent of our enrollment as really. Uh, we are asking legislators to consider bumping that down to sixteen. Because sixteen is the legal age at which a student can drop out of high school. And otherwise we're concerned that you would have a bunch of sixteen and seventeen year olds floating around without a non-traditional environment to attend. Students under eighteen could attend, um, our school as program students, but what that would mean is. They would attend foothills for one, two or three classes, however much they decide and you do, you approve. Uh, but they would stay enrolled at your school. So you would have a student who is on the roster for Appalachia High School attending foothills. And, um, the accountability would shift for that as well. So that student is counting, you know, in your graduation rate and on your. Uh, Georgia Milestones score and things of that nature. So just because of the logistical complexity there, we feel like there will probably be a decrease in the enrollment of, of whoever is deemed a program student. Whether it's under sixteen or under eighteen. Uh, there will also be a significant funding reduction. Um, in fact, we're expecting over fifty percent, uh, funding cuts to foothills. And, um, we, if some funding cuts are needed, we generate more money than we need and we have a large fund balance because of that. Um, and it's because, you know, we're generating money based on a full school build-out model. As opposed to the partnership and the efficiency that we have with school districts like this. So, you know, we're, we understand that there needs to be a funding cut. Uh, fifty percent is, is significant, but it's significant. So what we could use your support with is just to continue to be a great partner to foothills. Um, including with any conversations you may have with local leaders, state leaders about the impact that foothills has made on this community. And, uh, our ability to continue serving students in this community, no matter that enrollment drops, um. Or what that age limit turns out to be. We also ask that you support those priorities of just lowering that age. So we don't have students, uh, who are lingering out there. Um, we want to keep our, our, our local control. And by local control, what I mean is the superintendents of the partner boards, which Dr. McMichael is. By law required to, to be a member of that board and we're excited about that. Um, but we want to preserve that partnership and that local governance as opposed to all decisions coming. Um, for Atlanta. And then also we are encouraging the State Board of Education. To just monitor this rollout because this is a substantial change. That has the potential to impact numerous employees, but most importantly, students. And so we want them to stay tuned and just evaluate it. And force correct as needed. Um, the last piece I will just offer is an invitation. Uh, Tommy Jennings recently came and toured the, the site that we have at Russell and it's just not what you expect. And I would encourage you, reach out. I'd be happy to take you out to either Sims or Russell. Or a prison or wherever you want to go to see the work of foothills, but it's really, um. It's making an impact and, and it's making a strong impact. I also want to take just a little bit of privilege and thank a few people, uh, Jennifer Wood and Meredith Wages. I'm just gonna call her wages. Meredith Wages, they're just great partners and they work with us to make sure that our students and staff are well taken care of and. In the evenings. And so we really appreciate that. And we certainly appreciate the support of our principals, Nick and Derek and Jennifer. Uh, this is just like the poster child of a great partnership that, that foothills has with Barrow County. It's all in the interest of making sure that every kid. Including the square pegs have an opportunity to earn a high school diploma. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or concerns that, that you may want to raise.
Hi, do you operate any kind of childcare for, you know, people who have babies?
That is a great question.
They sometimes drop out.
Yeah, that is very common. We don't offer childcare, but what we do is we put them in contact with local community resources. And we offer, uh, flexible time. So for example, if they have some childcare assistance during the day, but not at night, and we're operating during, at night. We'll put some teachers virtual and go through Google Meet with them to make sure that we're able to serve them. We also have a, a one hundred percent virtual site for those students who, we've got one right now that, um, someone threatened to harm him. Not in Barrow County, but in a different school system. And he has severe anxiety about even going into any building. And so he's in a one hundred percent virtual environment. In fact, we have three hundred and fifty students in that environment right now. And a lot of parents find that useful.
Do you also offer, um, help with, um, laptops, phone books, things like that?
Any student who needs a device, we provide that for if, and listen. What we do is we take any barrier that's there and we remove it. So gas cards, you know, we do gas cards, so pizza, dinner, whatever it takes. We make sure that every kid is able to participate. In fact, we've driven, um, recently to, the student was finishing up a course and was traveling in South Georgia and really wanted to graduate. And we found somebody in South Georgia to meet him up at the library to take their last test. You know, so they didn't have to wait three weeks to graduate because if, if you don't, you lose them. And we don't want to do that. Thank you.
What else can we do to make sure this is still for kids? Because they're about to take it away from kids.
Going to be very measured because Dale's probably cringing a little bit because he knows.
Not at all.
Feelings on it, but, um. Honestly, it's, to me, it's a perfect example of something that was working beautifully and, and someone downtown decided that it needed to be changed. But, um, I think we always knew, uh, I was on the board when we first started with them, that, that the funding needed to be tweaked. As a matter of fact, foothills is, my understanding is the one that kind of pointed that out and, um, no good deed goes unpunished. But, um, they've really. We'll say they've really wrapped their arms around it in the past, uh, couple of years, starting with the Senate bill last year. Um, what we have now is much better, I think, than what was last year. It's taken a lot of work on foothills part or a lot of the superintendents and the different districts part. Um, I've had, uh, was able to talk with, um, Senator Dixon. Some along with some of the foothills folks, uh, was it Monday? It's, it does, it does seem like it's been about three weeks we've been. Working on this, but, um, and, and express some of these things. But the, um, the sixteen, for eighteen to sixteen piece, and I think just to be clear, you know, foothills and the other. Mountain, they're charters, basically charter high schools right now. And the, the bills, um, the laws and the bill that's passed will take that away. And they won't be a charter, their own charter school. There'll be a, I've forgotten the, the, the name that the lawyer should come up with for it.
The completion school.
Completion school, um, um, still doing the same good work, but in a whole different type. For me, the, the, the two big things really are, um, outside the funding, um, which. If they lose it in, uh, we'll, we'll have to pick up some. Um, we've run several different scenarios on that with the folks at foothills and it goes from okay to. I don't see how that could work possibly. So there, but there's a lot of variations there. Um. The sixteen to eighteen is a huge piece, um, almost. Uh, because the kids can drop out unfortunately when they're sixteen. And if we're, can't, foothills can't catch, collect them until eighteen, we're not going to see those kids again. Um, I mean, I'll take it personal for a minute. One of my daughter's best friend's mother's passed away and she just couldn't handle. The traditional high school anymore. And we were able to get her into foothills finally. She's going to graduate on time. But she was sixteen years old when that happened. Um, I don't think she would have, uh, gifted students all through school. I, actually one of my kids at county line when I was a principal there. Um, that kid, if she'd had to wait to eighteen, it wouldn't happen because she would have been at work or married or who knows what, you know? Um, and moved on to a whole different thing. So that, that is key. The other piece is grandfathering the kids in that are there now. Those. All those students just made a decision to go there. They were promised something. And to take them out and try to, which we can do it. We, we, we're very good with kids, but to take them and try to. reincorporate them into our schools at this point, a lot of them are just gonna not come back and drop out too. So I think those two. Um, were, are very, very key pieces. Um. The funding piece for foothill, I said, I think we all knew even on, on the board, um, that, that needed to be tweaked. Um, and it definitely got tweaked, uh, but, uh, so that's going to be an issue, um, going forward to, of course, we're gonna. Continue to partner with foothills as long as everything's feasible and, um, you know, keep them in our buildings and keep them. Working with our kids, um. But we, there're gonna be some changes and honestly, I think we're gonna see less kids graduate because of what's, what's being done. To the model of foothills coastal and mountain head. And mountain head's been around a long time. Um. I think we're gonna see, I think we're gonna see a decrease in the overall. I think the overall state graduation because of this, but, um, I'm, I'm hoping I'm wrong on that and, but the good people. Uh, great kudos to Dale and, um. Terry, give me Sherman, the superintendent and, um, the folks working, uh, they have stayed on this and, uh, and the so, other superintendents. Um, that work within the, um, that work with them because it's, uh. We've been, we've been, it's been about a good year, year and a half. We've been working on trying to get something done. That first bill just kind of came through quick, the Senate bill. This is a much better bill, um, goes through, we can correct those things. I think we can, can work around the rest of it. So, um. Again, as I've asked, you know, that, um, Senator, unfortunately, we don't have our, you know, Terry's not there. We don't have our, our new one in just quite yet. But, um, Senator Dixon's been very good about, um, being responsive in, in these types of things. Um, and, um, so has, um, Houston Games, but, um, anything you all. And due to especially those two things, the grandfathering those kids in and the sixteen going down to sixteen, sixteen to me is the critical piece. Everything else we can, you know, it, it'll be a bother to work around something that was, and, and. Redo things that were already working well, but we'll do it because it's what's best for kids. But, um. That, we're gonna lose a lot of kids if we don't get that fixed.
And I, I think Chuck at frustration was willing to work because I thought he was. So he's very willing and, and he's very responsive. He's, I thought, you know, the last two days.
A lot of this comes from, again, um. People tend to focus on what goes on inside the perimeter and those type of things and, and those of us that don't do business that way sometimes get lumped in with.
Dale, I have one question for you. Um, can you tell me where you got the information about the. Uh, prisoner recidivism?
Uh, that's from the Department of Corrections.
Department of Corrections. Okay. Well, the last time I checked, which was a long time ago, it cost about ninety thousand dollars a year to house an inmate in a prison in Georgia. Okay. If you have a twenty-nine percent drop in recidivism. At ninety thousand dollars a year.
Quite a savings.
That's, that's a lot of money that the state could save.
And I'm sure within flight.
Well, I'm sure it is. So we'll just get those numbers and then somebody asks what we could do. Contact your state representatives, your senators and your representatives in the house and say, tell me why you're doing this. And ask them questions. And, you know, whatever the rate is for prisoners these days, times twenty-nine percent reduction in recidivism. Should be enough right there without anything else. And why anybody would think that you would do this from eighteen up instead of from sixteen when kids can drop out of school. Unless they're gonna change the dropout rate, uh, to eighteen, the age. You know, this is just, to me, this is a no-brainer, which tells me that people are not really thinking about consequences of this bill.
Well, I, I, the way I get more with them, you're talking to, uh, Frank and Chuck and these things. I'll tell them our side of how we look at it. So it's like, why are you doing this? And why are you? I don't want to put them on the fence. So I, we've worked together as a team and that's how I approach it. And I get a lot more that way instead of putting them on the defense.
Yeah, absolutely.
They all work with me. I, I have a good rapport with all of them. I talked to every one of them last, I believe in.
Oh, and so. If any of you need their phone numbers and their emails, Beverly and the superintendent and I have them. So.
Kayla wants to chime in here.
Doctor Simpson, how many students are between the ages of fourteen and sixteen?
Um, I believe that number is twenty-seven, about twenty-seven percent.
Okay, percent. So that's a substantial amount of students. That would also be disqualified with the revisions if they came through, correct?
It is. Um, I would say though that, um, our model does work best in looking at the data once students have really started and attempted ninth grade. Um, but you, you're right, students would certainly, you know, be eliminated either way. They would have the opportunity to participate through that program model. It's just, it would be a lot more complex with. With attempting to do that in coordination with, with the base school. Uh, your point is, is actually, yes. And just offering, if, if you have any additional questions or anything, you can feel free to reach out to me. If you want us to meet with you or, or provide you information ahead of. Anyone you'd like to speak to would be more than welcome or more than happy rather to do that as well.
Yeah, I will say I recommend that she's been very, very open to meeting and, and learning about it. None of them are often on the. But, um, that one and then.
Who did? Do we know who go off of that?
First Senate bill was Jan Jones. And, um, that still seems to be a lot of the driving force behind that. Those, goes backwards, we'll just leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. I really do appreciate you coming out.
Thank you so much.
And, and y'all's partnership is, is, uh, it's been huge for us. Also, while we're on that, and so I know y'all are watching it, but the, um. The voucher bill that's out right now too is something you might want to talk to your folks while you're on the phone about. That's a big one.
So there's something in this legislation that I was.
Well, now I gotta call.
So they're trying to do an compulsory enrollment from six to eighteen years. You think that could have something to do with it? They're gonna try to make it compulsive to stay until you're eighteen? Is that tying maybe? I'm just.
I'm sure.
On the legislation, uh, the paperwork we got from the G S B A. Um, compulsive, one of the things they would, they want to support compulsory enrollment and education programs for persons. Ages six to eighteen who have not graduated. So compulsory means would.
Yeah, that, that one I don't know will happen.
Well, I'm just curious if that.
It probably is somewhere.
Is the G S B A involved in this at all? Is the G S B A involved in this at all in this particular? Is the GSBA involved in this at all in this particular?
Um, you could get the bulletins or the ones I poured it out. They give a pretty much daily updates on.
They, I didn't see, I didn't see anything about uh, charters, about this particular thing and they.
Off and on with with this one.
Yeah.
It's not charter schools, it's kinda not there. Normal area.
Yeah, so I was wondering if they are chiming in on this kind of particular issue.
Know.
Cause you're right, it's going to affect the graduation rate over the state.
Traditional public school there, they're not.
Right.
But yeah, the graduation rates are gonna be. Affected, I would, I would imagine.
So even though it's not a traditional public school issue, it is a, it's it's still an educational issue.
The big ones that work on, of course, are Gail, the Georgia Association of Education Leaders, Superintendent's Association, um. And um. And GSBA to to an extent, but they're they're more, I think they're more focused right now on the voucher bill.
Yeah, yes, I definitely saw that in there, but I just wondered because.
Alrighty, Ms. Banks. Alright, Dr. Thompson? Thanks, sir. Alright, before we move into new business, I want to apologize. This is new business that I should have done at the very beginning. I'd like to welcome Ms. Hendricks. She is filling the district seven at large seat. Um, so welcome. We're excited to to have you on board.
I'm excited to be here.
Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, so moving into new business now. Mr. Will.
Good evening. Alright, I like to talk about trash and grass and tonight is trash. So, um. It's time to renew our contract for uh, waste and recycle at at the schools. So Barrow County. Schools contract with local waste haulers to provide both trash and recycle removal services to our schools. The con- the contracted waste removal company also provides open top dock dumpsters on head as needed basis at schools. The current contract expires at the end of FY twenty-three. The maintenance department sought proposals for waste disposal and recycle services. The RFP was advertised on the Georgia procurement website. And the Barrow County Schools website for thirty days. Three proposals. Were received. The proposals were judged based off of suitability and price. The most advan- most advantageous and lowest proposal is from Republic Services. Republic Services is our current vendor and has performed satisfactorily. The superintendent recommends approval of Republic Services as the waste disposal. And recycle vendor for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year with the option to renew up to four more years.
At the same cost?
No, it was, oh, there will be a cost of living in increase based off the C P R.
For the next four years.
Based off a consumer price for that industry.
Party, consider agenda. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sinclair.
Thank you. As part of the renovations taking place this summer at Bethlehem. Additional data cabling is needed to support audio, support future audio enhancements installation and renovations to the front office. An RFP was posted and two responses were received. Low bid respondent tech optics of Winder, Georgia met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before. They are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. To allow for the possibility of unanticipated moves that changes during the renovation process. Uh, in addition to the uh, low bid, which was fifty-two thousand, uh, we are also requesting authorization. For an additional five thousand dollars. So the financial impact would be fifty-two thousand, one eighty-three, thirty-seven. From the bid response, a five thousand dollar contingency allowance for a total of fifty-seven thousand, one eighty-three and thirty-seven cents from I. Bethlehem IT funds. Um, as, let's see, the superintendent recommends awarding the bid for data cabling for Bethlehem. To low bid respondent tech optics of Winder, Georgia in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one eighty-three. Wait, three seven and an overage allowance of five thousand for maximum total of fifty-seven thousand, one eighty-three and thirty-seven cents.
Any questions?
Heard, alright. As part of the renovations taking place this summer at County Line, additional data cabling is needed to support future audio enhancements installation and renovations to the front office. An RFP was posted, two bidders were received from the same vendors. Similarly, to allow for the possibility of unanticipated moves that changes, we are requesting authorization for an additional five thousand. So the superintendent is recommending awarding the bid for data cabling for County Line. To low bid respondent tech optics of Winder, Georgia. In the amount of fifty-two thousand, one eighty-three, thirty-seven and an overage allowance of five thousand for maximum total of fifty-seven thousand, one eighty-three, point three seven.
Consider agenda. Thank you, sir.
Additional cabling is needed at Winder Elementary School to support audio enhancements installation with said data cabling worked in form during the summer. Uh, the same two respondents responded to this RFP. Uh, tech optics of Winder, Georgia met the terms of the RFP, has done similar business with us before. And they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Uh, to allow for the possibility of unanticipated moves that changes during this process, we're requesting authorization for an additional two thousand dollars. Uh, financial impact would be twenty-one thousand, six seventy-eight point twenty-two. From the bid response and two thousand dollars contingency allowance for a total of twenty-three thousand, six seventy-eight point twenty-two. From wider elementary school IT renovation funds. So superintendent recommends awarding the bid for data cabling for Winter Leisure School. To low bid respondent tech optics of Winder, Georgia. In the amount of twenty-one, six seventy-eight, twenty-two with an overage allowance of two thousand for a maximum total of twenty-three thousand, six seventy-eight point twenty-two.
Right, consider agenda.
I have a question. Why is there so much slower than that?
So they are a more recent school and they have infrastructure in the hallways to support the upgraded cabling. It's it's cable tray. Um, whereas Bethlehem and Canada line don't, we're having to put cable tray down the each of the halls. That's the primary expense. Let's see, um. As part of our continuous network infrastructure improvement process. Network switches at Bassa, County Line, I'm sorry, Kennedy and Westside are approaching end of life and should be replaced. An RFP was posted and eleven vendors responded. The low bid respondent MXN met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with this before and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The financial impact would be fifty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars from IT splosh funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Aruba network switches. From low bid responded MXN of Woodstock, Georgia in the amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars.
Any questions? Consider agenda. What is the law expectancy?
Shorter than the usefulness, so the life expectancy, they have basically a lifetime warranty. Um, but um, we'll run them for about five to seven years and at that point, technology's moved on and they're obsolete even though they're still kicking.
Alright. You're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Royal.
Good evening. Um, I come to you um, tonight um, with some exciting things that we're really excited about. We have been reviewing um, the math curriculums um, for K through five. Um, and looking for a math curriculum for our school system. So um. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of H M H and that stands for Holton, Mifflin, Harcourt. Um, Intermass Georgia curriculum for the grades K through five. Um, this purchase will provide print materials and digital forms, student consumables like workbooks. Um, for the six years of the adoption. Um, and it also has parent and home support materials and assessments with item analysis and resources for differenti- differentiation. And connected literature. Um, it's, the cost over the six-year period will be a million, four hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, S R funds will be used and probably some local funds will be used from T and L funds, teaching and learning funds.
What was the process in choosing this curriculum?
Well, we had a timeline that we went through. Um, we started out, um, Tamara is our math specialist and she's here tonight. Um, Tamara started out looking for math curriculums. What can I find? What's out there? And I believe you started with, was it ten? Ten or twelve. Um, and she kinda narrowed it down to eight of them that she thought would be viable for, you know, our. Um, workshop model and those kinds of things. So, um, she narrowed that down and brought four. Or was it six? It was six. Alright, she brought, we brought together the principals, um, instructional coaches from all the elementary schools. And they were able to come and look at those six. And then from there, we narrowed it down to the three. Um, and the three is what we went to the teachers with and that group of teachers came in and we went over all three of them, the companies presented. The teachers were able to go back and then use those things in the classroom. And so we gave them ample time to do that, um, and go through that process. And then when we came back together, um. Then we took the feedback from the teachers. And um, looked at it and it really narrowed it down for us, um. And so what we did was we took it back, um, to the, um, we have a new thing that we're doing this year. It's called the new, um. Instructional council. And so that was a group of people that had various people from the school system in it. That could real, look, look at the timeline, look at what we've done and kinda give us some feedback on, do we need to do something else? You know, what are your thoughts? And they recommended that we move forward. Um, and recommend to the board, um, that H M H um, really fit well with the math workshop model that we have in place. It provided centers and things like that for teachers. So that teachers don't have to spend so much time finding all this stuff on teacher stay teachers. And those kinds of things. So it will be all right there for one. So we're really excited about it.
How many, just out of curiosity, how many teachers were were in that panel? Just a average?
We had it.
You can ballpark it.
And um, we had home run teachers, special education teachers, E I P teachers.
That's amazing.
Yeah, my group was. Yeah, representing.
Right. Nice. That's, we, we like that. We like it that, you know, teachers are involved. That's always important for us.
Well, we want teacher buy-in. If you don't get teacher buy-in, they won't use it.
Yes.
We don't wanna waste our money.
Yes, that's awesome. Very good. Thank you.
So when the uh, Georgia decides to change the math standards, does that, we're gonna see this kind of reaction every time?
No, no, we shouldn't, um. We'll have this for the next six years. And I don't know when Georgia will change the math standards again, but this is the change just coming up this next year. We feel comfortable in it. I'm sorry.
Maybe if they did change some content over the six-year period with H M. A H. Yeah. Oh, you're not getting a six-year bundle. It changes. We get new every year, basically.
Yeah.
They would adapt if they, if they were to change, H M A would would adapt.
That's amazing.
At all of our um, curriculums that we looked at, H M H was the only one that was, that developed the curriculum for the Georgia standards. And it's the new Georgia standards. The rest of them, we would have to do some tweaking and things like that to make it fit the new standard.
Is the six-year an H M H requirement or is that? Something that we just said we need for six-year or?
It just kinda breaks it down a little bit so that you can pay some as you go along, um, kinda like car payments, I guess.
Six-year, three-year or one-year.
Yeah.
The six-year option because the. The one-year option was almost a foot one to the six-year option.
Right, next we have um, benchmark education. Okay, benchmark education um, materials, um. What we're asking for is the superintendent, superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of benchmark phonics and word study workshop. Consumable print and digital materials for students in grades three through five at all elementary schools. And the purchase of decodable text for Bethlehem Elementary, Kennedy Elementary and State of Elementary. These materials will be used to help teachers deliver phonics and word study instruction. And lessons and will provide students with decoding and all reading fluency practice. State of Elementary will also purchase additional writers workshop. On consumable materials and these materials support the district and individual school improvement plan. Um, the financial impact will be two hundred fifty thousand and A R P funds will be used to purchase the print and digital materials for grades three through five. And a combination of A R P and L four G A, our grant. Um, and consolidated funds will be used to purchase the decodable text and the writers workshop consumables for individual schools. And these were based on what the school needs were.
Did teachers look at this phonics program as like they did the math?
Um, we had, we are already using this in K through two. And so we had three through five and had the school start looking at it for three through five and we've, we've kinda did a few schools at a time. Um, who were interested in it. And so after some, you know, jumped in and said, yeah, we wanna do it, then others have come along too. So we're just about there with everybody, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Consider agenda. Alright.
Okay, and last one. Um, Frog Street Early Literacy Bags for pre-K students. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of nine hundred forty-two Frog Street Early Literacy Bags. Each bag contains thirty-five books. That caregiver, caregivers can use with their children to learn together, to read, learn new vocabulary and improve their comprehension. These book bags will be distributed throughout um, Barrow County. Um, through the Barrow Literacy Partnership. And what they're looking at doing, and when it says seven hundred twenty-six pre-K students. Um, it's actually um, pre-K students in the Barrow County school system. It's pre-K students, there's um, served through state-funded pre-K in the daycares. Cause we have several of those. There's about two hundred sixteen students there. Also the four-year-olds in eight daycares who aren't served their Georgia pre-K. And then there are also our E K students, which are our three and four-year-olds, preschool special needs. Um, children, they will also get them. So that to- that whole total totals all of those together. And um, we did this last year. And um, it was really great. I mean, the kids love them. They were so excited. They had a little green book back, you know, backpacks on and. Um, walking with them and, Miss Lynn, you're on the committee. We do a lot of, they do a lot of great work. Um, in the Barrow Literacy Partnership, we merged together when we did the L four G A grant. And we were able to use some of those funds um, to purchase for, and it really helped that group, um. And they've just done an outstanding job of getting good literature in the students' hands and for those, especially the younger children.
Uh, can I just make one statement here about this? We know that if children are not read to at an early age, like from the time they're born. Uh, and they come into our school system. They're already operating at a major loss in terms of um, being able to learn and read. And that's why we have such an issue with children not being able to be where they need to be by the end of third grade. And we know that if children can't read by the end of third grade and understand and comprehend words. Then the odds are extremely good that they're gonna drop out of school at some point. So that was why the Barrow Book Partnership started with nothing.
You're exactly right.
And uh, with a wing and a prayer, we said, you know, this is what we need to do. We did it and then we were able to get a state grant for hundreds of thousands, I think, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's how this has grown over the last ten years, really. To the point where now we can actually be assured that we're getting these books in to the parents' hands who need them most.
Yeah, that was active contract back a little bit what we were talking about earlier too with the um. Literacy bill that's going on down there. Right now, it it doesn't say we can't do those things, but it, you know, we we worried a little bit about it taking emphasis away from that. It has not done that at this point, but um. Um, another one to keep an eye on. But the um, yeah, we know that the birth through five is is something. And it's become a big part of our strategic plan for the next five years. Um, it's also the leading edge award we won last year with GSBA was was based around, a lot of it around the work. Um, that the partnership has done. So it's a very vital, vital piece of what we're doing and we have seen, um. You know, it's another secret. We have noticed a downturn. Over the past several years of students that haven't been in our pre-K that don't, that come to us not as ready. Uh, our pre-K, the ones that go to our pre-Ks, we've seen them come up, the readiness, but we've seen the, we've seen a steady decline in in readiness for the others. I think it has a lot to do with instead of reading, if kids screams now, that's just my. Not totally uneducated opinion, but um, it um, it's something that we have to keep combating and keep a focus. Not totally uneducated opinion, but, um, it, um, it, it's something that we have to keep combating and keep a focus on and, um. It needs a full program. You know, we, we hear the reading wars and. I think I've said it to most of you before, the only people that make, uh, make money during the war are the people that sell the weapons. But, um, so we, we need it all. We need the good parts of the phonics programs, we need the good parts of the, uh, the more. The books in hands, we need the, uh, the pieces that are workshop that should kids. Get to read books that they like and that they are interested in so that they can see themselves as readers. One thing to teach. The reading piece and we have to do that, that is a systemic systematic piece, but we also have to. Let them be readers too. And, and, you know, we, we see that pendulum swing back and forth all the time. And, um, you know, one thing we have said for years, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna follow that pendulum. We're gonna take the best, what's the best for kids. Whatever, wherever it comes from and, and make it work and, and. This is a huge part of that, so.
But in my thirty-three years, I've really seen it swing definitely back and forth. So we won't be. The best of both.
Well, I think we also need it, like you brought up with the leg lines and phones, cause they, they are attached to those, but I think we need to let parents know. Download, there's book free books, free things down there. They're gonna give that to them.
Get those free library cards.
Let them read the books or learn phonics and stuff if they're gonna be playing on there anyhow. Let them do something.
Yeah, our preschool, um, they, um, evaluate students here and they do hearing and vision. And so the prevent blindness lady was here. Um, and a lot of kids at the early age of three. Um, the twos, threes, fours, um, are having a stigmatism. And they're like, wonder what that's from. And all I can think of is a device and having their eyes on it all the time.
That they learn so much. I mean, we were laughing at my grandpa, she's four. Um, in her basketball game, she was out there in the middle. Sticking some videos standing out there just talking with another little girl, everybody else around is playing basketball. But I said, what were you discussing, Linda? What were you talking about? And she says instruments. She's four years old. Instruments. I said, what do you mean instruments? She goes, you know, drums and things like that. So where she picked that word up for, you know, whatever, but she, she. Rachel, you know, she, the phone, she usually even changed it to a different language.
I think we can't beat, it's a little over thirty-seven dollars for thirty-five, if appropriate, books. I mean, that's, that's a fantastic.
It's a really good deal. And that is the curriculum that we use in pre-K. It's called Frog Street XL pre-K. And that's the curriculum that we have there.
Yeah, and I'm all about, my, I'm just as bad about letting my boys be on a tablet, but there's something about readable, turning a page and, and in that process.
There's something about sitting in your mother or father's lap. The other thing that's my. Which is huge. They have been. Greatly instrumental in working with the school system to make sure that children and parents can get library cards. They waived the fines and, and done everything they can to make sure that, that children have access to books. And it is amazing to go to the library and see the parents coming in there with small children. Sometimes I have seen parents come in with three children under the age of six. And they are so excited to be there and be able to pick out books. And do the other things that libraries do. And our library system has. Just tons of programs for children to keep them entertained too, in a learning environment.
Right, and this, um, you know, they've always been an amazing partner with us, but. This, um, L four G A grant has really gone a long way to bring that in and give us, you mentioning funds earlier, we now have funds to do these things without.
We've been out to the health department and giving out the little board books to the little kids. Um, they're the partnership that we have and, um. It's wonderful just to see and they all get excited and the page's like, can I have more than one? They're like, okay, yes. And we get them to sign up for the library. And then we tell them where it is or where they can go, cause we have them in, you know, all around the county. And so, um, they get really excited.
Okay, yes, consent agenda?
Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Houston, fun stuff.
Moral support or backup. Tonight, we are asking that the board look at salaries now. And pre-approve a salary schedule for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. We feel that this is needed, um, to do before the hiring season begins to comply with our strategic plan. Um, specifically in elevating the teaching profession, attract employee, develop and retain highly effective Barrow staff. And, um, communication and culture establishing Barrow County School System as a destination for work. So, um, Cindy is going to go through the next slide and kind of give you some more details.
So, one of the things we did in January was a, a major change in how we survey. And our employees as, um, well as our community. And the results of that survey in part are on your screen. And one of the things that really jumped out, um, was the concern that our staff has over their pay. And you can see that on the, the top line in red, uh, forty-two percent. Um, felt like, uh, pay was, was definitely a concern. Um, and they rated that as their biggest concern in the chart on the, the lower right. So, we know that, um, that's something that we have been looking at for years now. And we've tried to make steady progress in, um, elevating particularly the entry level. Um, and so, for instance, last year we did, and on top of what the governor approved, the two thousand. We did another two thousand across the board. But what we found over time is that we've slipped behind. Rochelle, if you wanna. Here we go. Um, this is the current, um, salaries. Can go on to the next one. So what you'll see here is that, um, a comparison of us to our, some of our neighboring counties. Um, we looked at, um, Clark, Jackson, Jefferson City. Walton, Gwinnett, and then the state average. And what we found is that we compare very favorably with the state. Um, we are, um, above in most cases. All of the schools except, um, Walton and Gwinnett at the entry level. But as the years go along, particularly from five years to twenty years, we start to see a bigger gap. Um, and we are falling behind. So our, our proposal tonight is to try to make, um. A difference in that gap and reduce that gap so that we are, um, more competitive, particularly with Walton. Um, and those other surrounding counties. Um, and it's not necessarily gonna put us. At or, um, above at each step. But overall, it should greatly improve, um, the salaries of our teachers. And the same is true, uh, we've got the specialist, uh, master specialist and doctorate degrees on there as well. So you can see. Um, we go from being about. Um, about two hundred dollars, a hundred and something, um, to begin with. And then if you look at the doc, at the doctorate level. Um, several thousand dollars behind and it typically is enough to make, um, those folks. Think twice about where they go.
So, uh, we all have heard that the, uh, that's since the. The governor, Governor Kemp has proposed a two thousand dollar increase for all certified personnel and that seems to be going through the fine. Uh, so we are kinda anticipating that we are gonna be able to give that two thousand dollar increase to all of our certified staff. Um, this is our current local supplement that you see, we'll give them this, whatever state colleges to give them. And then we add, uh, that amount for, um, the local supplement. And now we want to, the increase is right there, the proposed increase per line item. It's anywhere from five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars, um, dependent on where you are in that, um. Whether T four, T five, T six. So the cost of the system for this increase is two million nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. Um, that includes, uh, the benefits on, on that, um, proposed increase. We don't wanna leave our non-certified employees out, um, so we also want to recommend an increase for our non-certified staff, three percent. Uh, this includes their parents, our bus drivers, our school food nutrition employees, our clerical staff and maintenance. Um, this will cost approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. So how do we find this? Um. So our twenty twenty-three profit targets were about fifty-five million dollars. Early and rough projections, and I've checked with the guy about this, um, are about an eight percent increase in the tax side just. So that's looking like four point four million dollars. Um, and that's due to, of course, profit targets, so the total cost is three point five or three point six million dollars. We believe the property taxes would be able to cover, um, cover up with the four point four million. Not even much for anything else, but we think that this is very important to put the money in the classroom, get, get quality employees. Especially during the hiring season and, um, when contracts are going out this week.
Right. And that's the reason that we're bringing this to you now. We do not typically do that. Most of the time our salary recommendations go through the normal budget process. But as you all know, we are in a really tight market and, um, teachers are shopping around. And, um, of course, we don't know what the other counties will do, but. You know, it's likely they will do something.
I was about to say, I mean, when does this end? I mean, oh, how do we not know that, you know, I mean.
Close to thirty years of doing it. I haven't seen it end yet.
Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna keep going. That's like, I mean, the gu- the governor's gonna give two thousand and so is everybody else gonna get two thousand. Yeah, so I mean, they're gonna, it's gonna go up too. It's, I mean.
We have to, we have to stay competitive.
I mean, I agree. I totally agree. You have to do it.
We just, uh, we're, I think, you know, I've been. Now fifteen years, we're in much better shape. Um, with what we have coming in than we have been, but as we were going up, so was everyone else around, so it's, um.
As I'm saying, is this even gonna do it?
Have to make more of a leap to catch up and then keep up. So it, but it's, yeah, it's, it's.
Cause it is competitive, so I mean.
We'll see, but it's hard to know.
Well, the elephant in the room is Gwinnett. Their starting salary is seven thousand dollars a year, more than ours.
But I had a principal tell me recently that that was the best pay cut she ever took.
And, and I think that.
Taken some pay cuts like that before and they've worked out really well, so, uh. Uh, Gwinnett's not the one I would, I'm really. You know, Walton sets the pace really for our research and.
And I think what we have to remember is if we do nothing, they're gonna do something.
Yeah, we have to do something.
Look at this, this we're in, this is the business, business of educating kids.
I'm just wondering if meeting them where they are right now is enough. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think, you know, uh, all things considered.
Because they're going up to, they're going up two thousand dollars at minimum. They're going up two thousand dollars at minimum.
Yeah, well.
So you're gonna go up two thousand dol- more than two thousand dollars plus.
Yeah, our local.
Two thousand will be funded from the state.
This is just the preliminary. Maybe when we go through the budget and we have all this extra money, maybe we can look at increasing it.
All this extra money, yeah, cause we have so much extra money.
But I think this is a good start.
So this is like.
Questions, two thousand dollars is the government's problem?
So, and again.
I don't know before they totally say, they didn't get us the money for it. Other things that might go up could, could impact, but, uh, the healthcare and those type of things.
I know the attrition rate for teachers at the five-year point was around fifty percent before the pandemic. And it's kind of reassuring to see that, and it sounds weird to say, reassuring to say that the attrition rate at five years is still fifty percent or flirting with that. So. This is encouraging for me to hear about increasing and staying competitive for teacher rates. But again, kind of to Stephanie's point about like what's gonna get us like above that, what can we do with budgets? And thinking about this long-term to be competitive to lower the attrition rate at five years from fifty percent lower. And then again, I don't expect an answer on that, but like as a board member, that's something that.
We've always stayed a little bit above the, uh, state attrition rate, um, last year. We were right at it at eighty-two percent, uh, not eighty percent attrition, but, uh, keeping so.
Right, lowering the attrition rate.
So we've been a little better than fifty, but the, um. It, it barrels just in a, it always has been. I think we don't have the industry that some or the other. Um, so all of our, unfortunately, all of, of a good chunk of our money. Has to come out of the property taxes of the individuals. Now, that's getting a lot better, um, economic. Uh, folks over with the, uh, county, um. Uh, over the past several years have done a, um, a great job of, of bringing that in, but we still have, still have to get them in. We, and we're still, I mean, if you look at the warehouses and those type of things in Jackson, and, you know, we, we're in a, um, we're just a. Taking, if we, if it weren't for our direct neighbors, we're, we're in good shape competitively with, with most of the state, probably better than most of the state. It's just where we happen to sit. It's our neighbors that we have to compete with.
I think it's less of a, the system itself, but a, a larger, a larger question again, and I'm sure it's something I can add to the tab. Houston, but.
It's a natural issue and they're just, um, you know. Um, honestly, you know, we go into a whole laundry list of, of teachers. Have too much to do, they're overworked and underpaid and they always have been, but now they've also been vilified a lot in, even the press. Um, and now we also have the culture wars and the political wars and all this other stuff that unfortunately has. Uh, found its way. Uh, we've always been a bit of a political football in the school systems, but it's, it's been much worse the past several years. Teachers are tired of it. They, they just are and I, I get it.
I've only been out of college for nine years. Uh, so yes, it says my age here, but all of my friend, I mean, there's a significant number of friends that graduated as educators that are no longer teaching.
Yeah, and, and you know, there've also, you know, there have been a lot of other things, especially the, um, and it's a difference in, um. It's in generations. We've been doing a lot of studies and I've been to a lot of conferences on the generation differences. Younger generation will, uh, we were brought up to go somewhere, stick with it and stay there and y'all weren't. And it's not a bad thing, it's just a different thing. And we have to, as an organization, we have to change to meet, meet better requirements and. Um, I've said it many times, you don't change a school system, it's not a skiff, it's a, it's a battleship. It takes a while to make the turns sometimes, but, um, we're, we're doing it pretty, pretty well. And, um, these ladies, especially in their staff, have done an amazing job figuring all this out. Where, where our gaps are. And, um, also the new way we have of, of polling our staff, I mean. Right there in. Living color, the, what they said is what we keyed on.
Yeah.
And, and that goes along.
Which is encouraging, yes.
Yeah, I like that. That's good. Good job.
Principles, everybody listening and.
But for a long time, we could say it's really not salary, um. And there are a lot of other things that go into it, but they told us with this past survey, pretty loud and clear that by, by a large margin, it was. Um, that was making some of the difference. And, you know, we do, we do work to live, not live to work.
Money puts a Band-Aid on some of the other things until you can address those, so.
Yeah, well, it, it makes it a little easier to, uh, to deal with some of the extra things when you feel like you're being compensated. There does.
Nobody goes to work for fun. Let's be real.
Sure, we're gonna add this to the consent agenda? The regular one? Alright, thank you ladies.
Okay, I have the, the next item as well, and if this is related to. Um, the discussion we had earlier with Ms. Wadley about, um, G N A Ts. And I think someone asked, um, you know, what is this gonna mean as far as personnel? Um, she told you right now, the plan is to hire three teachers and three pair pros. Um, and what we know is that right now, those folks that are currently G N A Ts teachers are on the market. And they're looking and they're shopping and they're asking, you know, what are you gonna pay me? Um, the current G N A salary structure is based on Walton County's salary structure. So we know that to be competitive, you know, again, that's where we need to be. And we also feel like in these particular cases, these teachers and pair pros. Need an additional supplement. And so we're asking the board to approve an additional supplement. Need an additional supplement and so we're asking the board to approve an additional supplement. Where the G N E T teachers and pair pros of thirty five hundred dollars. And we'll continue uh to monitor that, to make sure that that's in line. Uh, but right now we do feel like um we need to be able to um. To talk to new teachers um about that and be able to include that in what. We estimate their salary will be if they come to work for us, so. That is the superintendent's recommendation, any questions?
So that's our cost, that's our cost.
There'll be salary plus that. That's great.
That's hard to say. That's what they'd be making. I mean, you only get one, one shot first time, one first shot at it. I think it is, I think we've done a lot of research and looking at where, what, what the G N E Ts folks are being paid and and that's comparable. That makes it comparable to them, um, and of course, you know, we do have to draw a beam barrel county and so that it's a better place to come work and. And live anyway, so. Got that piece too, but I think, yeah, I think it's enough and it's um. It will help us, you know, and it is shared um with um Jameson City with our partnerships, so.
And again, we're bringing this to you now because we don't have a current G N E T supplement. Um, and so we don't have anything to base that on, but in the future, it will most likely be included in the budget.
All right, consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Lastly, Dr. Jones.
While Dr. Jones is only way up, I'm gonna make my second advertisement to these boss. Mainly because I want to point out, going back to the salary increases, that these boss does not fund salaries, has nothing to do with it and should not go into any voting. Um, decisions that anyone in the public should make, I can't tell you how to vote, but those do not, those two things do not go together, we're not peanut butter and jelly, so.
Well, good evening, um, good news, I'm not asking for any money. I'm the last one on the agenda, so you know. Um, what I am here for is to ask you to consider waiving a portion of board policy I H E. Which involves promotion and retention. Um, currently, uh students in grades three, five and eight must uh pass the milestones. Uh, test to be promoted. Um, we have waived that due to our uh charter status for the last couple of years. Um, and allowed us to use the other portion of that uh. Policy um to promote, which involves our local schools, looking at the entirety of the student's performance. Including grades, uh bringing in parents. Uh, and really trying to get to the bottom of whether or not the student truly needs to be um retained. Or have they um really shown enough mastery to evolve? And so um we are recommending that um we waive the milestones requirement temporarily for this year. Up through July thirty first, twenty twenty three. You have any questions, I'll be happy to field them.
And um I believe this is the third year we we've done this, soon to everything we.
And our schools are still.
Went through three years ago.
Our schools are still feeling the impact of COVID, even though. Um, you know, the pandemic is uh not impacting us directly. Our schools this year really, it it's our first year really to have a normal school year, three years and so. And we feel like this is the best way to evaluate our students' learning.
Where are we on Jenny Persinger's plan to get rid of these altogether? And replace it with the.
It's been a bumpy road, we're we'll we'll try to get you some updates on that, but it's um. It's hit a few snags, but it's, we're we're still in there fighting, so that's a um, that that's a one we're kind of. Working through, working with the D O E and um our other folks, try to keep pushing forward because it's, you know. Using, that's, we're still very, very convinced that using our map scores instead of saltoxy reports at the end of the year. Is the way we should be held accountable, so we're we're not gonna give up. A few other districts have kind of given up and, but we're still leading the charge. Patient's already dead.
I think, I think failing a child for this is unfair personally, so I I wish we could do this every year.
Unfair to kids and it's unfair to teachers and.
Totally unfair.
You know, anybody, it's just not a good accountability, there's a few things that you can pull that that are, you know, valid from pulling. Overall statistics and things like that from the testing, but as far as being able to prescribe what a child, individual child's needs are useless. Some folks argue with me over that, but that that's um been my conviction for years and. It um, and the the bit of usefulness that's in there to me is not worth the harm it does to teachers and and kids.
As a parent myself, looking at milestone tests and looking at map tests.
We're seeing it now with teachers, as as um Miss Cindric said, you know, teachers are coming in, I've never seen. It's still a small number, but the past probably two years, we've seen teachers leaving in the middle of the year. Um, a- after their first year in their first year and it's, I think a lot of it has to do with they're just. The kids that are coming out of school that are are focused on good academics, those that their anxiety gets driven so high. That when things aren't perfect, they can't handle it.
Yeah, for sure.
And um I've seen it with my own children, um, the ones that are a little older, that have the same levels as the ones that are. In just graduated or in school now and it it's just, and we definitely see with teachers, I mean, teachers are. Um, pharmaceutical companies are making a fortune off inside medication for for teachers and staff these days.
Yeah.
So I'd say it's safe to say that this was the consent agenda. All right, thank you, sir, we got one more. Now we'll talk about the uh naming of the new elementary school.
Okay, just to give you an update, we uh met with an interim S G T last week and we looked at the uh, we had two hundred and twenty one um. Survey responses and of those two hundred and twenty one, three rows to the top. Uh, Austin Road Elementary, uh Smith Mill Elementary and Marbury Creek. Of us, and the top vote, if you wanna know, was Austin Road.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, how many?
Two hundred and twenty one, yes, ma'am.
And how many votes did Austin Road get?
So out of the six members, four. And then we did a second round for number two and that's Smith Mill.
And Austin Road got the highest number of.
Yes.
So it got the highest number of committee and the highest number of respondents.
It's called Fun Elementary, which would be the winner, but.
Yeah, we had one called Fun Elementary. This school should be fun. I agree, but.
A little.
Yeah.
Cats Claw Elementary. Alrighty, that's a fun one. I mean, it's creative, I.
Yeah, so those are um, you've got the, the three top picks there, um. And again, the order was Austin Road, Smith Mill, uh Marbury Creek. So what we will ask you to do um next week is vote on them, um. We. Really, I get the discussion time on that, if if. If Austin Road is the top and everyone's agreeable with that, I think that would be the the one we would bring forward. But I do know that we've named the things after creeks and and other things too, so uh. The uh, the policy is that the top three come to the board and. Board makes the final decision.
I I need more information on Austin, the Austin family. I don't wanna name the school after the Austin family and find out that we had some issues with some.
That's in there too, yeah, it should be in your.
Just saying, just saying.
Yeah, we we did that, we did that search, Tim and Stevens, there it is, it's all in there, we have.
Well, but this, the Austin Road thing is like two, it's uh two sentences.
Yeah, we're waiting on a little more information on that one and we'll get that out through.
I mean, if I'm on vote board.
Our local, yeah, folks, but uh really interesting when you get a chance to read through those, really interesting. Genealogy and. Pieces in there, so.
Right, anything else?
So are we adding, where are we adding? We'll need to add a vote for the, just the name, not as long as the name. We can discuss more tonight or we can discuss it more.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I think out of all three of them, we all want the votes. All right, guys, so at this time, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon employment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary act. Or dismissal, there's parts in the ring for period of evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. Or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you, guys.